Welcome. Today is Thursday, August 7th, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. I would like to call to order the Town Council Meeting of Bowling Green, Virginia. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now take the roll call. Mr. Hagaman.
Here.
Mr. Stork.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coyle.
Here.
Dr. Chenault.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Voight.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
All council members are present. We have a quorum. The next items, Items 1, 2, and 3 are on the consent agenda. They are the meetings, minutes for budget rate setting meeting for May 22nd, the meeting minutes for May 22nd, and the meeting minutes for June 5th. Do anyone, do any of you want any of these pulled off for discussion? At this time, could I please, from council, have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Councilman Hagaman. Is there a second?
Sure.
A second from Councilman Voight. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Consent agenda is accepted. We will now move on to public comment. Is that ready? Any of you wishing to speak, you have three, come up, please state your name and your address. You have three minutes to speak. You will address me, the chairperson. Please know that our rules do not allow for us to answer you or talk back to you, but we are listening to what you have to say, and we take notes, and we have discussions about these things. So at this time, I would like to open up public. Let me add one more thing. There are people who email me. If you email your mayor at the town of Bowling Green, you put in the memo spot "public comment", please include your name and your address. If you write something, remember I cannot read as fast as you would because you wrote it. But if you will write something brief, as your mayor, I promise I will read every public comment that comes into me through email. So at this time, I will open public comment. Welcome, Ms. Cropper.
Hi, Pat Cropper, 251 North Main Street. I think this is my second or third time of speaking. I have a couple of comments. One, I respectfully ask that the minutes of the Town Council to be published the month after the Town Council meeting, and if they would be published under the heading of minutes, because otherwise I have to go to the agenda, print out the agenda packet, or read the agenda packet. I'm reading minutes from three months ago. That's one issue. The other, I'm sure that most of you are aware about the easement that property owners were asked to sign. This was done, we got a letter in March of this year. From March until July 5th or 8th, nothing was done according to the property owners, because we received nothing that said, "We're going to move forward." These are some questions we have. We had a roundtable meeting. I requested it. I don't know if that did any good or not, but it happened. And we had a morning meeting and an evening meeting. We are still waiting for answers. You have property owners that you are asking to give the town of Bowling Green an easement, property, and we don't have answers to when it's going to start? What happens when the USDA grant expires? What are the consequences if we, or what are the recourses that the town of Bowling Green is going to do on the property owners if we don't sign? I and my husband have indicated that we're in favor of, we know that this probably needs to happen, however. Answer the questions. Give us the information. I just don't know how you can blindly give us a piece of paper. The second letter that we got was a certified letter. The one with the deed was an open envelope that we got in the mail. It wasn't even sealed, and it's dated in 2023. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cropper. Would anyone else like to come up at this time? Please, welcome. I'll get you next. Go ahead.
Did I cut somebody off?
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Anne Marie Giles, Roper, Bowling Green Meadows. I'm going to read it right from here so that I don't have to try to remember anything. "At the June Town Council meeting, something was mentioned about a house on Milford. My ears perked up. I was hoping that it was a house on the corner of Milford and Martin, but was instead a house that has been, had a caving roof for nearly 20 years, but now something has to be done. I would love to see attention paid to other problems around town that affect all of us, not just a homeowner of a single home. I have been promised by the last three town managers that we would walk around town to see what problems exist. To date, that has not happened. Most of the time, there are trees and branches growing onto the sidewalks so that you have to bend over so you don't get hit in the face. You have to walk single file if you're walking with anybody. The sidewalks are littered with branches and limbs, and often dog feces, which makes it challenging to walk without twisting an ankle or stepping in something. Now, back to the house on Milford and Martin. If you're on Martin and you want to turn onto Milford, you have to get out into traffic to see if anything is coming, and hopefully you're not running over anyone on the sidewalk. Same can be said for Oak Ridge and Virginia. You can't see what's coming because of the trees and branches, and I've been told that the town can't do anything about, at all about it. Another problem, I don't have my water bill. I've never had to chase down a bill before. I've always gotten my bill the month before it was due, not lately. It can come at any time. And if you knew me, you would know that's more than a problem, more of a problem than you think. I stay on top of my bills. I look for them every day in the mailbox. It's not there. One last thing worth mentioning. It has been discussed many times that the public doesn't show up for meetings, no matter what time you schedule them. Town Council feels that people just don't care, or could it be that maybe we feel like we're not being heard? I'm curious about one thing. I would love a show of hands. How many of you go to county supervisors' meetings? Same thing.
Right.
Same thing.
Again, we're not allowed to respond.
I know you're not. You're, I haven't stopped talking.
Go for it.
Same thing. So people don't show up. It's not just town people. It's all of us, and we do need to show up more often. But if you don't feel like you're heard, I feel like I'm paying taxes for nothing. That's exactly how I feel.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Giles. Next person, please.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm Yvette Harvey. I live 16044 Harrison Way. I have come here plenty of times in the past in reference to the water bill. It's ridiculous. I moved here in 2021. 60% of my bill has went up within almost four years. That's ridiculous for a single person. And on top of it, my bill has been fluctuating up. I travel a lot. I don't use a lot of water. I called the water, the water. They told me they was going to look into it. That was in April. I called again when I got the next bill because it went up again. Nothing happened. I called this last time when I got this bill because my head was about to explode how much it was. They said they're going to look into it, but we don't get notices or anything because we live outside of the town of Bowling Green, and that's not fair. It's very disrespectful. We don't get anything saying that the bill is going up. Only reason why I knew the bill went up because I saw a question on a newsletter that said, "How come the bill increased?" That's not right. We're paying double the amount of money. We pay double the amount, 50% more than what people in town pay, and we're not treated equally. And something needs to be done. We don't even get a grace period. We could at least get a grace period for 10 days or something, or five days, but you want to charge us. We can't even use a check to pay online because they charge that too. It's, something got to be done.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Would anyone else like to come speak? Ms. Cannon? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Council, Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. I appreciate the opportunity to stand here tonight before you, and I have a few comments for you. I was here at the May meeting. I was not here at the June meeting. And you had a hearing, I think, about all the rate increases that the council had proposed for citizens. And if I'm not mistaken, I think there were 20 to 30 people here. I think this room was full, if I'm not mistaken. From my point of view, all those people spoke the same language as I did. Why are you doing all this increase? Why? And that's my question. Why? I can understand if you increase a couple of things, but you increased everything and/or added two other items, and/or we haven't even got to tax bill, of which the county has raised assessment on, which the tax bills will be based on. And I've already figured, my tax bill is going up almost $300 for the town. You could have left it at the equalized rate, which was what, 6.8? Am I right, Mayor?
Yes, very right.
6.5? That was equalization rate. You could have left it at equalized rate. You didn't have to raise the taxes too, in addition to everything on the table. You could have been, you could have thought about the residents. The senior retired people like myself and my husband, there's a lot of us in town. People live on a fixed income. This is a small town. This town is not like your other big towns that you have a lot of residents. You've got a lot of income coming in. It's different. We're the small-town atmosphere, the historic town of Bowling Green, and I would like to see it stay like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one more addition.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see if y'all would consider, think about reconsidering some of these things that you have done to raise on residents, and I could give you a better suggestion, since you've already done it. And I don't understand how you, I'm like this later, I don't understand how you do your water bills. I don't understand your software. I'd like to see a whiteboard up there explaining it all to me at a meeting, how you come up with the things that you come up with. So my beneficial suggestion is, give all the residents a rebate, across-the-board rebate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will now close public comment. At this time, I'm going to move on to member comments. Mr. Hagaman, do you have something to say?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Stork?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chenault?
No.
Vice Mayor Coyle?
I believe we should have a discussion in reference to your position on planning commission expiring? July? So I think something down the road, if we want to just think about it and have a discussion on whether appointing, reappointing, the end of the year, January, however it needs to be done, so just so it's in the hooper there of what we need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Voight?
Couple of quick things. Okay, first off, Fort Royal Festival on 4th of July, went to that. That was pretty fun. I was not able to find you there, Bonnie. I don't know if I just missed you or not, but it was a good event, so if you're involved, good job. Let's see, I have been asked a couple of times in the last couple of days about the fall clean sweep. I wasn't able to get a minute with the town manager yet tonight to even ask about that, but I'll get an answer on that soon, I would think. Roll into the planning commission report. The planning commission didn't meet last month either. If I rewind back to the June meeting, I'll just say that we did refer over from council here the discussion on food trucks. We just had the little opener. We haven't really dove into that yet. That'll be upcoming. And that's all I've got for today. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. The only thing I have, I'm going through my council packet, Items 1, 2, and 3, the meeting minutes. I would like to commend Mr. Jeffrey Smith for the wonderful job he did writing up the minutes. They were very thorough. They were very well executed, and I want to thank you for that publicly. Okay. Next thing, we will move on to our staff reports. Item number four, wastewater treatment facility sludge management and the overview. At this time, I will turn this to the town manager and let you turn it over to whom you need to.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Smith, if you can have AECom presentation pulled up. By the way, of intro, we've discussed the status of our wastewater treatment plant, also known as our wastewater treatment facility, particularly as it relates to the drying beds. Over the last several years, there have been some attempts to improve the drying beds. We know that the majority of our drying beds, in fact, all of them have not been performing at the level that we have hoped. Based on subject matter experts, they basically indicated that all five of our drying beds have failed. I think council had approved prior to my arrival initial rehab of those beds based on previous operators. Our current operator has taken a look at our sludge drying beds and came with some recommendations. I think back in June, we have been working with a group called Moonshot Missions through our work with the state, which has been free of charge to the town. I'd like to clarify that. They have been taking a look at various options for our wastewater treatment facility, and particularly as it relates to our drying beds and de-watering of the sludge at our plant. So with that, AECom, the group who has been doing the majority of that work along with our contractors in Boden Environmental Services, have spent several months, probably six to eight months, working on PER for grant submitted to the state to help us with the potential solutions for the wastewater treatment plant facility, which we have submitted a grant on behalf of the town for that fix. So they are here today to present their findings as it relates to that work, the several months' worth of work, and just for the public's awareness, this is about $140,000 worth of engineering work that was freed to the town based on work of staff, myself, as well as public work staff that have been working with them diligently over the last eight months. So Ian, with that, I'll hand it over.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ian Camper. I'm an engineer with AECom. We're based out of Roanoke, Virginia. I'm joined by my colleague, Tim Kent. He was the primary author of the report for this. So we like to discuss our findings and recommendations that we developed looking at the sludge management system at the treatment plant. Next slide. For those not familiar with the plant, the treatment plant, it has multiple stages, and it's currently managed by Emboden Environmental Services. They're the contract operators running that plant. The flow comes in, and it's screened through primary treatment. That's where the core solids are removed. And then it goes through successive stages, starting with secondary or biological treatment. This is really where the sludge is generated. So we're growing a large quantity of bacteria to treat the water. That bacteria is removed through settling and filtering, and that settled material is what becomes sludge, and it's what we have to manage and get out of the plant. Next slide. So the treatment plant was designed with a rated capacity of about 250,000 gallons, or 0.25 million gallons per day, with a peak of about 0.75. The plant's currently operating well below that, which is good from a capacity standpoint. But one thing we learned when we got started with this project is that there are new permit limits that are going to become effective beginning in 2028. So in addition to the current issue with the drying beds, what do the impacts of those new permit limits have on the treatment process performance and the expected solid generation from that? The primary constituent of concern is ammonia. That's the one that will be enacted at the end of 2028. So there will be a new permit limit there, and that's the one that really impacts the treatment process performance. Next slide. Need for the project, as India mentioned, the ineffectiveness of the drying beds is the primary concern, right? They're not draining. Sometimes the sludge sits there for months at a time, doesn't de-water, and it becomes a nuisance. We believe that the primary causes is, one, the incorrect media being used in the drying beds just doesn't allow water to settle through, it just clumps, becomes plugged, and then the underdrains underneath the media bed are clogged and broken and damaged. And as a result, instead of hauling away dried solids, right, you're hauling away liquid sludge. And based on the records, that's to the tune of about $340,000 for the past year.
Is that a higher amount to have it disposed of when it's wet than when it's dry?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So to improve this, there are a couple of options. One, right, we can repair the existing drying beds and maintain the status quo, or we can look at a new mechanical-based de-watering system. And that was the focus of this project with the goal of creating this report that can support the application for funding from the state for the improvements. Looking at the current operations, the plant is actually doing really well. Particularly, we see a remarkable improvement in performance once Emboden got involved. And the key metric there is the reduction in what's called the mix slicker suspended solids. That's the biomass concentration in the system. That has dropped considerably, and there have been other performance improvements as a result. Better settling, less solids carry out into the F1. Sludge production is averaging about 4,700 gallons per day, and we'll keep that kind of the metric as we look at the system in the future. One item we did, could go back, yeah, sorry. One deficiency we did note is in the digester volume. So the sludge goes to the digester, it's aerated and stabilized before it's de-watered and sent away. That digester volume is about half of what the regulations require for the state. So that is one deficiency we noted, and that would hopefully be addressed in this project. So when we look at sizing the system, we're looking at not how it's operating currently, but at design conditions, right? We don't want to put in undersized equipment. We want it to match the rated flow of the plant. The biological process is very sensitive to temperature, so both winter and summer conditions affect biomass growth, so we get different sludge generation volumes. So with that, these are kind of the design metrics that we came up with, design criteria. But if, on the bottom-left table there, you can see under scenarios A and B, our sludge generation at design conditions with these new permit limits is expected to double or even triple to what you're currently producing. So that's obviously going to have a tremendous impact on how much sludge you have to get rid of. Next slide. So looking at alternatives, first, we want to take a look, is it even feasible to repair the drying bed? We know that they're not functioning now, so it would require replacement of the media, fixing the underdrains. But then we also looked at, are they appropriately sized for what they need to do? Looking at the regulations, the existing drying beds are about half the size of what the regulations require at our design conditions. They also have less de-watering capability than a mechanical system, so we're going to generate a more wet sludge, and essentially, the wetter the sludge, the more water you're hauling, the higher hauling cost. So we want to get as much water out as possible to reduce our operating costs. And drying beds are also just labor-intensive compared to a mechanical system. So we looked at three different options for mechanical de-watering equipment. Belt filter press, which is essentially a series of belts. You add the sludge, they squeeze under high pressure and remove the water from the solids. Rotary fan press operates in a similar condition, but instead of a belt, they use a series of pressure plates to squeeze the solids, and then a centrifuge spins at high speeds, essentially whipping the water out, and resulting in a dry product. So when we look at these, from both financial and kind of non-financial, non-monetary considerations, the belt filter press comes out ahead. It's the lowest in terms of net present value costs. We looked at a 20-year lifecycle for the equipment, so taking into account the initial costs.
Is that the life expectancy of this, 20 years?
Yeah, 20 to 25 years is a pretty typical design life for this type of mechanical equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So you're looking at initial capital cost and expected operating cost from power, man-hours, chemical usage, all of those. The belt filter press came out financially the best alternative. When we look at the non-monetary considerations, there's a lot of things that kind of go into that. And the belt filter presses are great for large facilities because they can handle a lot of sludge, not the best suited for small facilities like Bowling Green. They can, there are small frame sizes. But there are other technologies like the rotary fan press, which was really developed for small facilities. But there's some also downsides. The rotary fan press produces a wetter sludge compared to the belt filter press. And then we look at the centrifuge. The main disadvantage of that system is just, it's operationally very complex, very high maintenance requirements, maintenance costs. And then when we talked with Emboden, we wanted to get their feedback because they're ultimately going to be the ones operating this system, right? And based on their experience at operating similar facilities around the state, they have a lot more preference for the belt filter press for a couple of reasons. One, it's less sensitive to any changes in polymer that needs to be added to help de-water the sludge. And it's also less sensitive if the solids' characteristics change because of a process upset. You get someone discharging something to the sewer they shouldn't have, and it changes the characteristics of the solids. The belt filter press can handle that change a little bit better than the other technologies.
Does it, it handles the, like, the fog, the?
No, a lot of, fog is a detriment to a lot of technology, and that really has to be handled upstream in the system, either through the pre-treatment system.
Before it gets to the sludge.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the belt press can, you know, because grease and oils, right, they're eventually going to emulsify in the sludge, potentially, depending on the physical characteristics of the plant. But if that becomes a problem, belt press can handle that a little bit better than some of the other technologies. And also the impact we, or feedback we have from Emboden is that the belt presses are a lot easier for operators to learn, so you're getting potentially new staff and other people coming in. It's a simpler, easier, easily, more easily visualized technology compared to the other ones. It's not like a black box that sludge goes in, you get cake out. It's a little more operator intuitive.
The maintenance cost on it? The maintenance cost on it, is it substantially less for the belt filter press and, you know, like replacement parts or that sort of thing?
Yeah, the main maintenance items are going to be bearings of motors and shafts. And then the belt, that'll be the biggest cost if the belt gets damaged, replacement of the belt. But the belts themselves usually last a pretty good while. It's just if they get misaligned and somehow catch the edge of the frame, they could tear. But compared to the other ones, they're a lot more mechanically simple.
Okay, thank you.
So for all these reasons, the belt press is really what we recommend for this facility. Next slide. In terms of where we could put this, we looked at a couple of options. One option is simply put it underneath the existing canopy you have out there for the drying beds. But there's a lot of downsides for that. One thing, we want a weather protected, more weather protected environment for the equipment, protecting its freezing. And to modify that existing structure to enclose it would be challenging, I guess you could say. So we felt a better option would just be to provide a new right-sized building to house the equipment. And with that, you would need the supporting infrastructure, power to it, water to clean the belts. How do you handle the process drainage, get it back into the system, and any site improvements? And all of these are considered in the cost that we developed.
That's option two?
That's option two. One concern that was brought up during the course of the project is, you know, are we keeping growth of the town in mind as we look at these options? Now, we look at, you know, population data, it's been pretty stagnant over the years. But we do want to make sure we are forward-thinking. And with some potential development coming into the town, we want to make sure that the equipment is right-sized to accommodate that. The equipment that we're, particular equipment we're looking at as our basis of design is by a manufacturer called Alpha LaValle. And working with their engineers to try to feel, get a feel for what's the range, flow range that they can accommodate? And how does that translate into current design and future design conditions? So the range they gave us, you know, has a range of about 15 to 30 gallons per minute. And that corresponds at the low end to about 4,500 gallons per day of sludge. That matches pretty much what you're generating right now. And then at the high end, about 9,000 gallons per day of liquid sludge. And when we look at our design capacity, you know, the rate, the plant's rated capacity at 0.25 MGD with the new permit limits, that gets us about 4,900 gallons per day is where we're projecting the solid generation would be. So we have about almost half of that capacity available for future growth down the road. So the equipment may age itself out before it actually needs to be expanded type thing. So we feel we have a good equipment size to cover the full range from current operation all the way out to the future. Some kind of non-engineering impacts that we looked at. One, what are the environmental impacts for this project? There are a few water bodies kind of surrounding the treatment plant property. But we don't anticipate that these would be impacted during construction, you know, with proper erosion sediment control measures installed to handle that. We do recommend that, you know, as part of this project and working with the state, that the town apply for a categorical exclusion because we're essentially updating the existing treatment plant on an already developed site. So there is no need to do a phase one, phase two environmental impact assessment.
So that basically it puts us under like a grandfather clause?
Essentially means that the, your, the proposed project is essentially not going to have any environmental impacts because it's already on a
It's already been.
Previously developed site.
Right.
So there's no need to go through the effort and expense of doing the environmental impact assessments for a project that's not going to have those impacts. So the state allows that through an exclusion.
Okay, the stream in bed or in the pond, is that, that's the bio-retention pond?
No, that's, I think that's just a nearby off-site property.
Okay, thank you.
It's just in the vicinity. So just runoff concerns is always an issue. From a sustainability viewpoint, we see some benefits of this project from a sustainability perspective. One, compared to how much truck volume is needed right now to haul off liquid sludge. That's going to decrease tremendously with the de-watering equipment. We're removing all that water. So there's going to be a decrease in the amount of trucking, right? So a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and energy associated with that. There's going to be essentially no impact for land usage. We're going to use the existing property. We don't need to acquire any additional property for this project. It'll be done right there on the site. There are potentials for some water savings. The project does not include, so the plant had space for some non-potable water pumps. Essentially, use the treated water for any needs, water needs on the plant, you know, wash down, equipment usage, that you don't have to use drinking water. That equipment has since been removed. Yeah, essentially. That equipment has essentially been removed. You can continue to still use potable water for this new de-watering system. But there is opportunity to consider maybe using reused water. Then impacts to the community, that's always a concern, particularly as we're looking at solids handling facilities. There's always a concern about, you know, what sort of odors are we going to deal with? The odor is always a big thing at wastewater facilities. It's not the best smelling place. But we see these, the potential for increase in odors from what's already kind of the baseline condition at the plant to be minimal. If anything, it may even improve, especially if we're putting all the equipment in a enclosed building, essentially. So we don't really see increase in odors being a problem. There may be, obviously, there may be some impacts during construction with construction traffic coming in and out of the facility. And then once the solids are de-watered and hauled off to landfill, there'll be occasional truck traffic for that. But it'd be substantially less than current operation hauling the liquid sludge. So looking at expected costs and schedule for the project, from a construction standpoint, we're looking a little shy of $2 million for this project. And then when we add in all the non-construction costs, the engineering, administration costs, legal, all that brings it up to about $2.7 million. And that's the amount that has been submitted with the funding application. From a project standpoint, schedule standpoint, the funding was applied for at the end of July. So that's going through now, that application and approval process. While that's ongoing, there's nothing stopping the town from soliciting professional services for design. Go ahead and get the design started. We anticipate the design will take about nine months to design this system. A couple of months for soliciting bids and award, and then about a nine-month construction period. And that pulls us up to about mid-2027 at the end of construction. So that's essentially two years from now. So what does the town do in the interim? Do you continue to pay $340,000 a year to haul liquid sludge? Or are there other options? So we did evaluate two options, kind of interim measures until construction can be done. One is, you know, just rent the belt filter press. There are vendors out there that provide that services. There's a one-time fee of about $25,000 to get the equipment to the site, and then there's monthly costs. So when we look at an annual operating budget, that's about $205,000 compared to 240 or 340 that you're spending now. We will have to provide dumpsters, the connections to support the equipment. The other option that we looked at is a much simpler solution using de-watering boxes. And these operate essentially in the same manner as the drying bed, just in a more compact, more efficient standpoint. And it's a much more cost-effective solution. A one-time expense of about $1,600 to get the box to the site. And then there's a monthly rental cost plus, and this operating cost includes the rental company hauling the box off and disposing of the sludge and bringing it back. And that's about $80,000. So.
The, taking it off-site, does the de-watering box dry it out as efficiently as the belt filter press?
It would not.
Then, so the costs for hauling it off are going to be more because there's going to be more sludge?
Yes, but that's factored into our expected operating costs.
Their costs, thank you.
Yep. And then just like the belt press, there are going to be some temporary measures to get everything hooked up. So with that, I'll open it for any questions.
Are there questions from council? Mr. White?
Okay, bouncing right off what you were just talking with, the rental stuff and giving, being able to give the annual operating costs there versus our 340 we're spending for hauling right now, what should we be spending right now? Do you have any estimate like on, like how bad they are with all the extra water? Like what should it really look like?
And we don't have, AECOM doesn't have what the hauling cost would be for the drying beds? If the drying beds were operational, right, and functioning, how much were you paying at that point compared to the rental costs? The only measure we have is the last year where you're hauling essentially liquid sludge.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested in that because like, you know, we're, 340 is obviously, you know, far too much. So there's something wrong. We all know there's something wrong. But I kind of would like to know what optimum based off how they are right now. Because that would help, you know, when I'm trying to digest this cost and explain these costs, like, hey, like if we're, if we're paying double what we should be because they're not operating efficiently, then, I mean, that already tells me that, you know, we should be saving 175 versus, you know, what we're, 95. But, you know, that would be a way to do that. But, you know, that said, how did you get to the numbers on here for these annual operating costs?
So for the belt press, that includes expected power usage, right? There are various motors, electric motors, they're going to take power. There's chemical usage for polymer to add to help thicken and de-water the sludge. That's included in there. And then I believe, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it also includes the estimated sludge, the de-watered sludge hauling cost, right, the disposal cost of the sludge itself.
Okay, do you have like a volume amount of what that is supposed to be?
We do. It's not in the presentation, but it is in our report.
Okay. Like, I don't expect you to have like the tier rates at every facility around here, but, you know, if I knew the volume, I guess I could figure out that math later.
Yeah, and I'll add that the hauling cost, right, it's going to be dependent on where you're hauling it to, how far, the tipping fees at that facility. So, you know, what should you be paying? It's kind of a hard question to answer.
Certainly fair. That one covers that. You know, I'll make a little bit of an out. This is the most, what's the word, comprehensive, you know, discussion we've ever had on this. This is well-written. I definitely appreciate that. We've kind of ballparked it before in years prior. Unfortunately, this has definitely been inflated since, you know, the times before, you know, three is, I think it's almost doubled since the ballpark we were given two years ago, I think it was, right? But this is a needed way to go. I want to make sure I got my other things. Oh, yeah, quick one. With the option two, with placing it, and maybe this is more a TM or Sean question. That, no, you don't have it up anymore. On the map for option two, so by not putting it where the current drying beds are, I believe, and correct me where I'm wrong on this, I think that they were, they used to use that spot on the map a little bit for, is that we had dumpsters there or something? Obviously, if you've put this on here, it's deemed to be a good spot, but I was trying to remember what was happening in that spot before.
Yeah, when I was out there, there was some signs of, and it may be where the dumpsters are being placed when you take the sludge out of
Yes, yes.
The drying bed to load it into the dumpster would be, I think that's where, you can kind of see where the ground's been kind of tore up.
Okay.
Looking at the site, that was really the best location for it, mainly because of the topography. The site does slope as you move kind of north on the page there. It goes down quite a bit of a hill. And that was the best option there. Now, there are a few abandoned buildings from the old treatment plant still on the site that could come down to make room for this facility or others. But that's also with added cost and being given their age. I know disturbing those old facilities may open up a can of worms that the town may not want to consider.
What kind of usage can we purpose the very large drying bay area for after this?
So what we envision, it would be a great place to, essentially, once the sludge is de-watered, it can be stored under there until, that way you're not, and if you need to go several weeks before hauling it, it's a nice sheltered place.
Sure, sure. That makes perfect sense.
And that could be put right on the existing media. There's no need to dig all that out.
Okay, good, good. I have another point thing to get back to later, but it's not so much a question, so I'll stop.
I do. Is there any type of regulations or compliances that we have to adhere to being close to the Maricassac Creek for the Chesapeake Bay watershed?
Yeah, and that's what's reflected in the new limits that are effective in 2028. Essentially, the ammonia limit would be a new limit because of changes into the overall Chesapeake Bay TMDL strategy.
Very good, thank you. Are there any, Ms. Adam Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow quickly on a point, Councilmember White made. We can work with Emboden to bring back some historical data as accurate as we can bring it. But also just want to point out, particularly if we're looking at this apples to apples, as he mentioned, as it related to the performance of the plant when Emboden took over last year, there was a significant amount of hauling that had to take place just to get the plant operationally where it should be. So there are going to be some one-off inflated numbers as it relates to this year at the beginning of that fiscal year to get that caught up. Also, a caveat to that, when we were looking at some of this historical data and how it should operate back when we had a sludge agreement or a bio solids hauling agreement, there were times that that was going to the county's facility as well as King George, all of which were closer based on some changes over the last year and a half, maybe even two, our sludge is being hauled off to different facilities as far as Hanover, and in some cases, particularly maybe Hopewell in some instances as well. So that also is some increase as it relates to the costs as we compare these. So it's not necessarily apples to apples.
Are there any other questions from council? Go ahead, Mr. Sork.
So the application for funding was submitted in July.
Correct.
To who and what's the match and how much do you think?
So I believe there was a 25% match on this one. So we would know hopefully within the next three or four months if we were, if we were selected.
Mr. Webb, Bureau Resident Engineer, do you have any questions? Okay, Ms. Davis? Dr. Chanel, Vice Mayor Coyle, Mr. Hagaman. Mr. Gamber, thank you so much for speaking with us.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Did you have another? For us, not for him, okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Hydra Trogeological Source Evaluation Report and Water Quality Update from StanTech.
Anything you want to say first?
This is Bryant Maljoy from StanTech, and he's going to give us an update. I'll pass it over to him. Mr. Bryant Maljoy.
Thanks, India. So I'm here to give, it's been a little while since I've been here, so I wanted to give a little recap of where we are. Work that's been done to date on water quality and water quantity concerns in the town. Some recent testing we did on Town's Well 4 and next steps. Next slide, please. I just said all that. So, next slide. So just a reminder, going way back here, StanTech was brought on several years ago now to evaluate increasing the withdrawal limits in the town's groundwater withdrawal permit to accommodate potential growth. You're previously pretty close to maxed out and unable to accommodate new connections. So that application was submitted in 2024 and issued towards the end of 2024 with a permit limit of about 90 million gallons per year. So that's an increase over your last permit, but I think it was like 65 million gallons per year, or a billion gallons per year, if I recall correctly. Sets an increase over your last permit, but I think it was like sixty-five million gallons per year or a billion gallons per year, if I recall correctly. So it gives you a little more room there. Alongside that, there were numerous special conditions which DEQ issued. Um, you know, those are items that are above and beyond the typical compliance requirements for groundwater withdrawal permits that are put in place for a variety of reasons, whether it's, you know, existing facilities not meeting current regulations, um, you know, increased, uh, withdrawal limits. It, it's not uncommon, but it does put, you know, an extra requirement on the town to comply with over the next permit term. So to highlight some of those, this slide here summarizes that. First of all, we do want to note that there were initially, there were very tight deadlines associated with complying with these items. Before we applied for the permits, it was made known to us that they were expected to be done before permit was issued. But we did get those pushed back to five years after the permit was issued. So we're looking at twenty twenty-nine for the ultimate compliance date for these items. One of them being the abandonment of Town Well Number One, um, and Well Number Four. Those are items related to their construction. They were not constructed properly at the time, um, and they're required to be abandoned. Well Number Five, uh, its pump has to be raised. That's related to it's being set below the top of the aquifer from which it's pulling water, which is not allowed by regulations. So it has to be raised up to a higher elevation. Uh, a geophysical log completed, uh, near that well, uh, to verify, you know, which aquifer it's constructed in, make sure there's not any issues with its construction. Um, and same thing for Well, uh, One A. It needs a pump raise and geophysical log to help DEQ, you know, understand where that well is constructed, you know, geologically speaking. So obviously, the abandonments require replacements for you to keep the same capacity for your, uh, water system. The pump raises also pose a significant challenge. Um, by raising the elevation of that pump, um, sort of seen in that schematic diagram on the right, there's less room for the water level to decline in the well as it pumps, which means essentially raising the pump reduces the effective capacity of those wells. So all across the moors, there's new wells that will be required to maintain the town's current capacity and ability to support, you know, its current and, and future connections. So separate issue, um, but related also the source water, uh, the town has detected elevated gross alpha radioactivity, uh, in all of its wells at this point. Well Five, Four, and One A have had detections above the EPA's maximum contaminant level. So, you know, over the past couple of years, been working with the town and VDH on path forward here. Back in mid twenty twenty-four, uh, we proposed an action plan to the Department of Health detailing how the town intends to, uh, address this, uh, which was approved by VDH, and they subsequently issued a formal corrective action plan in September of last year, which we'll go to on the next slide here, some of the requirements of that. But essentially what that does is it lays out a timeline and expected steps that VDH anticipates to happen. You know, to keep the town in compliance, um, you know, with their, uh, consent order. In summer twenty twenty-four, there was an application the town submitted for the Planning and Design Fund Grant Program. And that's a program administered by the Virginia Department of Health to handle some preliminary engineering type services. And I'll get to what we, uh, use that for in the next slide here for some testing of existing well number four. Uh, in March twenty twenty-five, VDH issued a revised corrective action plan. We negotiated with them a little bit on the deadlines that they had proposed in their previous corrective action plan, which were very aggressive. They're going to be difficult to meet with all of the engineering construction work that will be required. So we did successfully get those pushed back. So there's some interim, interim compliance dates, which we'll get into in the next slides, but, you know, in the end, they're aligned with the DEQ permit. So twenty twenty-nine is sort of your, your cutoff for needing to have all of this in place in order to maintain your current well capacity.
I have a question at this point.
Sure.
We're looking at getting the new wells. Do we have to take care of the gross alpha before we get the new well? Because, I mean, the new well could also have the gross alpha.
Yeah. Very good question. Um, and I'll get into a little more detail on the next slide here, but essentially, you will want to have the new wells in place before you finalize a plan to deal with the gross alpha. Because for that very reason, we don't know what the water quality is exactly of the new wells until they're in the ground. So there's some preliminary work that we've done in the meantime to help get you closer. Um, but, uh, but yes, we do think that the wells need to be in the ground first.
So if we get a new well and it has gross alpha in it, they will let us put it online as long as we are actively pursuing a corrective action for the gross alpha?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. And also, uh, spring twenty twenty-five, um, in May, town submitted an application to this drinking water state revolving fund, which is another program administered by the Virginia Department of Health. It's a combined state funds and federal funds, um, program to help with, uh, drinking water compliance issues. And that was for, you know, we did some very preliminary, um, work to come up with cost estimates for that, trying to be conservative. And we requested eight point three million dollars, um, to deal with the treatment and the new wells that would be required, um, between now and twenty twenty-nine for that work. So that was submitted in May. Uh, VDH intends to issue offer letters, um, in October, um, for those funds. So we're hopeful, keeping our fingers crossed on that, but we won't hear anything until October. One more item on, sorry. Um, and then finally, uh, in July of this year, the town submitted a letter to the Department of Health requesting consideration of funds that were allocated, um, under House Bill sixteen hundred. That is a bill that specifically identifies the town of Bowling Green as a priority recipient of a bucket of money of twenty-five million dollars. That was in addition to the state drinking water, uh, revolving fund program. So this year's a little bit different. There's an extra, VDH has an extra twenty-five million dollars available to spread around, you know, as, as they see fit, but it does require priority consideration of the town of Bowling Green. So, so that's good. Again, another item that we're very hopeful for. Something of note here is that the House Bill sixteen hundred funds do require a, a town match of, I believe, twenty percent on that. About twenty-five percent, excuse me. Um, but there is good news there that the VDH has determined that, you know, if the town were to be awarded SRF funds in addition to the House Bill sixteen hundred funds, the DW SRF funds could be used towards that twenty-five percent match. So, you know, we'll have to see how it comes out, but there's some, some hope there that there'll be less required, um, on the town's behalf to come up with. Uh, now, good, next slide. So this might be a little bit small to see, but I, I pulled out the five, uh, items that are in the corrective action plan from VDH just to show what the town is committed to. Item number one there, um, is really just, it's ongoing, town providing updates on the status of, um, compliance issues and public notices. Item number two is collection of additional samples, um, which are, are being collected. I presented some of that in the previous slides. Quarterly samples for gross alpha and then some also, some additional sampling, which I'll get into next, um, to help figure out what exactly is the source of this gross alpha that's being seen in the wells. So that's being done. Item number three, town will hire a professional engineer to develop a preliminary engineering report to evaluate treatment technologies. Um, you know, Stan Tech was procured, so that is, um, also underway. This, uh, testing that I'm going to talk about next is sort of the initial step to that PER. We've not really gotten underway on the preliminary engineering itself, but that's information that was required to, you know, help us move in that direction. So that part is underway. Item number four is obtaining a construction permit for the required construction. That's still a couple of years down the road. And then finally, as I mentioned before, by the end of twenty twenty-nine, this all needs to be in construction, um, or sorry, uh, construction needs to be complete and in service, meeting your gross alpha MCLs. Next slide. Okay, so that's the background, everything that's happened. This is a little more current now. The forty-five thousand dollars, which was awarded through the Planning Design Fund Program, was used for a Packer test on a well number four. Packer testing is, you know, a schematic on the right here shows essentially what, what was done, um, in Town Well Number Four. So as, as you recall, well number four ultimately will be required to be replaced, um, due to its construction. The current plan is to do that on the same well lot. So Four in particular has four different screen sections, which are separated by blank pieces of pipe. So the screens are where the well pulls water from the aquifer that's sitting alongside it. So by isolating those screens, you can, instead of collecting one bulk sample of all the water that comes out of your well, you can see what is the water quality from, you know, this zone from three hundred fifty to three hundred sixty feet. What's the water quality from this zone, which is, you know, three hundred to three hundred ten feet? Um, those are not precise numbers. I don't remember the screen intervals offhand, but that's the concept.
So when you're, we're, you're doing that, you can somewhat isolate from which level of, of soil that the gross alpha is being emitted from?
Exactly. So it's, it's sampling discrete intervals at, at different depths as you go down. So we were able to collect three different, um, samples at three different depths. With the goal of seeing is there higher gross alpha at one depth versus another. Um, you know, there's some hypotheses that maybe it's coming from the deep bedrock, which is underneath your coastal plain sediments. So that was the purpose of this. Can we design a new well in a way to avoid it? Unfortunately, um, you know, we did, we did submit a, a memo with some more detail on this, um, last week, I believe. But essentially what we confirmed is that polonium two-ten is your source, uh, which was, you know, there was some very early sampling that was done back in twenty eighteen, I believe, when this first arose as an issue. But that's needed information to help design treatment for it. You know, bad news is here is there's not a significant difference in the radioactivity from one elevation to the other, um, at least in well number four. Meaning that we're not going to be able to design a new well intentionally that avoids the radioactivity issue at, at that location. It's likely that that's true across the board, um, but we can really just speak about that one location for now. But what that really means is that the new well that gets put in needs to be constructed in a way that optimizes its yields, you know, capacity, get the most water out as you can. There's not really anything that we can propose to do on the construction of the well side to avoid the radioactivity. So what that means is treatment is likely going to be necessary. So we, you know, we were planning on this all along, which is why the grant applications went in requesting treatments. Funds, we were hopeful that there would be a way to avoid it, um, but that does not appear to be the case. Uh, so where to go from here? I mentioned that there are currently two funding applications that are under review, um, both through, uh, the Virginia Department of Health. So the first one we'll hear back on is, uh, mid-September for the House Bill sixteen hundred funding. And then next, shortly after, at the beginning of October, we should hear back on the state revolving funds. So following that, you know, a lot of this is really hinging on, on funding, you know, don't want to spend a lot of money upfronts if we can be reimbursed for it through these funds down the road. So we're hopeful to get moving on the rest of it after those funds come through. The first thing will be a well drilling, um, specifications document and invitation for bids that will need to be a competitively procured item, um, to meet the grant requirements. So there's two locations at this time that we'll plan on for that. We'll see what the yields, you know, if they're great wells, which we hope, you know, we'll be able to design them and we'll have a good contractor to, to do that work. That may be all you need. Um, so we're going to, we'll see where that goes. So the IFB is really the next step on that front. And, yeah, as was mentioned, it really makes sense to get the wells in the ground before getting too far along on the engineering side. So you understand what water quality and yield you're dealing with and your well locations. You know, that said, there is still some preliminary engineering work that could be done. Um, the Packer test was the first, you know, one of the first steps that we could do related to that. Next, I think is really, it's a treatment alternatives analysis. What is the best option to deal with this? There are several different treatment technologies that could be considered. There's the option of, do we have one centralized treatment location that all the wells route water to? Do we have smaller, um, treatment locations at each wellhead? There's a lot of things to consider there for, you know, determining what's most effective, what's the most cost-effective. Um, you know, followed by some preliminary engineering and design work. That, uh, preliminary engineering report, um, is due to the Virginia Department of Health, um, in May first, twenty twenty-six to meet their, the corrective action plan requirements. So that's a, we'll need to move forward quickly after, you know, funds come under, come in. So those are the next immediate tasks. Um, I've put the remainder of the tasks to get through to, um, you know, through twenty twenty-nine, the bottom there. You know, ultimately we'll have well construction, drilling and construction, preparing final engineering plans, construction permitting, tying in of those wells. Um, but those are all a little bit further down the road, um, you know, later into next year to get started on.
Do you have to drill test wells first?
So, no. Uh, you're somewhat fortunate in the Potomac aquifer that you know essentially what depth you need to construct the well to, to find the aquifer. What, what needs to be ironed out is where those screens get placed, which will happen as the well is being drilled. So we won't have a separate test well associated with that. We may have on the same location, we may have a bore hole that goes in in advance of well construction, just to figure out those intervals, see if we want to, you know, procure specialty materials and to, you know, optimize the efficiency of the well before it's put in the ground. But there won't be a standalone test well. There, it might just be a process of doing a, a bore hole without a well, getting some information, and then going back and putting the well in the ground, you know, at that same spot.
Is there a reason that we are absolutely committed to having to use the Potomac aquifer as opposed to the shallower aquifer of the Acquahia aquifer?
Yeah, great question. Um, so the Acquahia aquifer in some places can yield a substantial amount of water. Um, in others, it can yield almost nothing. In this location, it's a very thin, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we did a, we did an alternatives analysis early, early, early on in this before we even submitted the permit application. I think it was twenty nineteen, twenty twenty even, um, where the Acquahia was deemed to be an insufficient source based on the likely quantity. And I believe there were also some, what DEQ calls critical cells right in the town vicinity, which basically means this, even a small amount of water withdrawn from it would not be permeable by DEQ. So we did evaluate it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from this council? Town manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just wanted to highlight, um, and thank Bryant and, and Stan Tech's work, um, over the last several months, um, almost a year, it feels like. Uh, do just want to highlight that it was staff's work to, to acquire those, um, grants, the forty-five thousand dollars that we received last year. Myself and Mr. Lirri, Lirriar worked on that work, who's no longer here, but also Sean, who's done significant work in pulling data that we need for all of this information in Public Works. And council for adopting the legislative agenda last year for the first time. A large portion of why we are at the front of the line for this, um, this funding is due to council's adoption of the legislative agenda, um, that I drafted and I worked, um, through the last general assembly process with our legislative, uh, delegation at the state, also that we are at the front of the line along with Green County. So I'd like to definitely thank, uh, Senator Stewart, Delegate Pew Kent, um, as well as, um, some senators, uh, who are not in our region, um, that have put, helped us get to the front of the line to resolve our issues on behalf of the town and to lessen the burden for, um, our taxpayers in the town. So I definitely, um, just want to thank everyone for that effort. Um, and just to, to highlight a little bit more, I spoke with VDH earlier this week. We will probably know on both of those things as our results. In mid-October, um, the federal funding is contingent upon, um, the federal budget. So with that caveat, um, it could be a little bit later than that, depending on what happens at the federal level in the federal budget.
Thank you. Any other questions? Bryant, thank you so much for giving us this report.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number six, and at this time, I will turn it over to our town manager so she can give her June and July report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief, um, in the interest of time. Uh, we are hoping to get our FY twenty-three audit, um, in the middle of August. A draft with the final audit for presentation in September. I will notify council if we have any changes, um, from our audit firm, um, in between that. And then the goal is to, uh, catch up and start FY twenty-four immediately thereafter. Some updates on our software system transition. Uh, we've completed phase one and phase two of that, um, transitioning from Keystone to Southern Software. Um, I'd like to commend our staff who've put in over five hundred plus staff hours, as well as, um, the public has been patient with us, um, as we did have to close down the offices for that transition at the end of June and July, um, to get that work done. There were, uh, thousands of, uh, data entry, um, that had, had to take place, um, from the old system to the new system. We have transitioned to on, a new online billing provider, which is on our new website, um, and we put in the newsletters as well. we put in the newsletters as well. We have a new credit card terminal in town for processing. We have new account numbers for customers, new internal portals, portals for efficiencies and effectiveness of operations. There was a mention earlier of bills being delayed. Some of that was due to this new system transition, but we've also been working with our bill printer, who had some hiccup with getting some of them out to some of our customers. So that is going out, I think that went out last week. There is a note on there that there will be no penalty and interest to those people who receive their bills later, and they have until an extended grace period until September 5th to make those payments. So that is an item for update. As it relates to grants and economic development, we submitted the final application to the, in collaboration with the George Washington Regional Commission for $300,000 grant to investigate the town system with CCTV where possible and then to cure in place where possible. I'd like to thank Web and Associates for assisting us with that work. We submitted that in July as well, July 18th. We completed our grant closeout for the fire department state grant and dispersed those $15,000 funds to them. We've completed our grant closeout process for our DEQ litter grant and then submitted a new grant application as well for DEQ for this annual litter round, grant round. We've also continued to work with Main Street as they've received a technical assistance grant that we've been collaborating with. As you would see, we've presented the PER findings from AECom, who presented just a few minutes ago. We've continued coordination of the VDH grant project, which Stan Tech just mentioned and presented just a few moments ago. And we've continued with the easement acquisition process on the USDA waterline project. In addition, we've done recruitment for our boards and commissions for BZA as well as EDA. We've continued to work with the town attorney, which you have on this agenda for a town code update, a holdover item from 2018 or 2019 that we're cleaning up for council consideration tonight. We closed out our Atlantic Union Bank Future Maker internship program. Mr. Beal gave us some additional capacity over the last two months, assisting with everything from data entry to design for Harvest Festival. So he was great and like to thank Mr. Ashcraft, who assisted with the grant, enabling us to get that $4,000 for that additional capacity for this summer. We've also continued working with Fort AP Hill and the procurement efforts there. We completed, they completed their first project in June as it relates to HVAC repairs at some of their facilities, and Mr. Fortune assisted them with that. We have two more bids that will go out, have gone out this month with their next projects. And then we've had some interest, obviously, in events. Harvest Festival is underway. We've held stakeholder meetings there. And then we have recently received an application for youth, for a 5K and a youth one, one mile race in May of 26, and that'll be on the agenda for council consideration next month. And that'll conclude my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions from council? Ms. Adams Jacobs, the billing of the sewer and the water, I know that there was some slight glitches there. Are they, the billing company working with, like, people that don't have sewer, getting the sewer fee? And, I mean, they were really wonderful to take it off. And everyone I've spoken to that it was miss billed, they've all said that the office staff has been wonderful about it, but are they actively working to?
Yeah, we've been actively working with our new system provider, but as well as our billing. And through this process, obviously, there are things that have been identified as some historical challenges that we've heard anecdotally. So this, through this, we're troubleshooting, and it may be that at some point in the future we look potentially for another billing company if we can't get the, the files accurate and the bills corrected, but we will give them some time with the new provider to try to work through that, but we'll, we'll assess after a couple more billing cycles.
Okay. And I would like to add one more thing to this real quick. For the Harvest Festival, for the first time, we are going to have television coverage. Ms. Adams Jacobs and myself are going to be on Good Morning Richmond a week and a half before Harvest Festival, so we can promote it to the greater Richmond area. So we're hoping to have a much larger attendance this year, and I'm really excited about this because I've been asking for this for 15 years, and I had to become mayor to get him pushed through. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. We will be on CBS 6 Virginia this morning.
Yes.
And my mother used to work for CBS, so thanks to her for also helping to make the connection.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next, we are going to have a report, the treasurer's report, the finance director. And Ms. Oliver, you were not introduced at our last meeting because Ms. Jacobs had to leave. So I would like to welcome you as our new finance director, and I will let Ms. India give an introduction about you.
You are correct, Madam Mayor. Let me see if I can pull up what she had written. Give me two seconds. Well, I'll just go ahead. Ms. Oliver joins us from the private sector. She is a Caroline native, Caroline High School graduate, graduate of the University of Mount Olive, former basketball star there, Division One athlete, also graduated with a bachelor's in mathematics and a concentration in accounting, and has previous local government management or local government accounting experience. So we're happy to have her join as part of the team. I'm going to leave the private sector to come serve the citizens of the town of Bowling Green. So with that, I will hand it over to her to give her update for this month.
Thank you. India kind of already touched on my two main points, but my report is enclosed in you guys' packets. The first item is the status of the town audits. As you know, they've been a little behind, but in terms of the FY23 audit, everything that we've done on the towns part has been completed. We're just simply waiting to hear back from Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates. We did get a date set also for FY24 for when they will be able to be on site to start upon completion of FY23, and that will be September 15th, I believe, that we got from them. So hopefully we can get that rolling so we can keep getting caught up. The next thing is the status of the software conversion. As our town manager has already spoken about, it was very long, but everyone in terms of the finance staff has worked a lot of hours, and we were able to have all of the active utility accounts transferred over from Keystone into Southern, which is our new system. In terms of all of our third parties that were involved, including INCO, our billing system, as well as PSN, which is our new payment portal service, everything's been going smoothly with them with minimal, minimal errors. If there are any errors, we have been doing our best to, you know, answer phone calls, fix everything if there is anything wrong, but it has been minimal, thankfully, so far. And then in terms of the front desk and customer service operations that we have when customers come into town halls, they have been very helpful with all of the events, any trash requests that we have been going on, business license processing, as well as any questions and concerns and complaints that we might have from customers in terms of setup for their new account numbers, as well as the new payment portal. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Are there any questions from council? I do have a couple that I want, are there any from council? In going through this revenue and expense budget analysis, we have miscellaneous, well, I see up top we have cigarette tax and meals tax and the projected for the original budget, and then, of course, what we collect. But down here, further down, it says miscellaneous, and then under that sales tax, our original budget, we had budgeted $0 for that, but I noticed that miscellaneous is 284662, and sales tax, 614507. What is that sales tax for, and what is the miscellaneous for?
So I believe that's something that we may have miscoded. Those are two checks that we received, I believe, from Dominion. And again, with the new transition, previously, a lot of things were being coded just to miscellaneous instead of the individual line items for miscellaneous. So that's something that we'll probably have to go back and put into the correct line item, but I can look into that and get back to you.
Okay, then on the next page, on page two, it says late fees and penalties. That also was originally budgeted 00. I see that we have brought in $3,011.50. What are those late fees and penalties for?
Sorry, you said page two?
Yes, ma'am. Underneath the treasurer one.
It's page 18 at the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry. At the top, it says page two of seven, so I was looking at that. Yes, page 18 at the bottom, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am. I'll also have to look into that one and get to you.
Okay. And then the other thing, well, there's two. I'm sorry, I went over all of this, so I do have questions. I was looking at the police department. In the police department, we have scheduled $10,500 for electricity. I'm curious why that little building has a $973.82 electric bill for the month of July, yet I see no electric bill for town hall. Are those, I don't see any expenses actually for town hall. Are those, is that the same bill? Are they on the same electric bill? Are they two different services?
It should both be through Dominion from what I've seen, but it may have been coded differently, but I can look into that as well.
Okay, because that was listed. And then the other thing, well, we don't, I didn't see anything for our, our, what Sean does, I'm drawing a blank at the moment, that's not utilities, it's the other maintenance. We have a vehicle fuel and oil budget of $3,000 for the police department, and for the month of July, they spent $0. How do you run police cars and not have any gas expenses?
That is true. I'll also have to look into that as well.
Okay, and so, and then?
So I'd like to just share that with some of the system conversion, we had to do AP towards the end of the month, and so there may be that some bills that have gone out have been paid since this, this report was run, so that is a possibility as well. But we are looking into making sure those things are coded in the correct way. One of the things that we did improve with this process is prior account numbers did not necessarily jive with the auditor public accounts, what is required by the auditor public accounts. So we did, in this process, update some account numbers for that process, and that's included in here as well. So we can follow up on some of those items. Anytime you have questions, you can feel free to share them with us ahead of the meeting so that we can be prepared to answer some of those questions as well.
Why is there, I guess, is, there's no section for the maintenance? The maintenance department?
There's not a standalone maintenance department, so the Public Works should be included in here, and if that's not pulling, that's something we'll have to print. There are various different layouts, so.
I didn't see that it was, I would like that, please, in the future, so I have a more accurate picture.
It was always Public Works, but it is missing in this one.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Are there any other questions from council? Okay, thank you so much. It's lovely to meet you, and I always ask a lot of questions, so get used to it.
I do the same thing. It's good to ask questions.
Okay, good. Okay, next, we're going to move on to item number eight, the May and June utility report from Imboden. Hello, Mr. Jamie.
Good evening. How is everybody?
We are well.
So I'm here, like you said, to read, to give the presentation for the May and June report. Everything was pretty calm, quiet. This is all in the second quarter of reporting, so the gross alpha was still elevated. Stan Tech did a great job on their presentation, what that's about. For the wastewater plant, everything was business as usual. Everything is less than QL. Pretty much, pretty much a quiet couple of months there for May and June. Anybody have any questions? I know they're short, sweet.
Any questions from this council? I have none today, aren't you happy?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, we will move on to item number nine, the Bowling Green Police Department, the reports for June and July. Has council looked at that? I do have one question about this. Are there any questions from council? And this is kind of a budget question, too. Town hall events, you did two of them, one in June, one in July. We had the budget numbers for July. You were paid separate for security, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So I didn't see that reflected in your budget as far as, I know that's a different payment thing, it's over and above your normal pay, correct?
It is. Yes, ma'am. Forty-seven an hour, they say town hall, and then I get reimbursed.
So, because I, like I, when I looked at the budget, I didn't see it reflected as being brought in or being paid out, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention that. Are there any other questions from council? Thank you so much.
How did the night out go?
Went well. Cooked over 100 hot dogs, ran out. Probably was 125, we ran out. A lot of people, I mean, with the community that we have, and of course, all the partners, Caroline County, they helped out big time with it. The apartments on Chase Street donated the food. It went well.
Very cool. I want to thank you for being involved in that, and everybody else that helped out. My family was able to go, I was, I'm always working on Tuesday nights, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to miss it. Thank you.
Justin, I do have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
In, in the budget, I also saw $865.13 collected for court fines. What kind of fines are those for? Is that for traffic violations or trash in the street or what?
Yes, ma'am, that's what it's for. It's for court fines.
Okay, and that goes directly into our budget, or do we have to split that with the courts?
We should receive it on the first of the month.
Very good.
Directly from the court.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Have a great day. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Item number 10, the town code update and adoption. And at this time, I will turn this over to the town manager, Ms. India Adams Jacobs, and our town attorney, Mr. Jeff Gore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back at the strategic planning retreat, we discussed the town code status, work that had been done prior with our municipal code, now Civic Plus provider, as it relates to an electronic town code. After that, subsequently, we discussed the renumbering that would needed to be done. Council approved an expenditure of $1,500 to work with Civic Plus to do that. They've completed that work. Jeff has done great work, along with myself, to give them updated ordinances and the renumbering portion, so we have that before you, which you all will need to consider for adoption, which after you all adopt, we can post to the town website, so everyone has access, access to that electronic document. You all were shared a link with that, with the town code last week, and Mr. Gore drafted the ordinance that we got today to adopt that, so that's before you all for consideration. Anything else as it relates to the town code to be updated thereafter, what happened after this potential action? And I'll turn it over to Mr. Gore if he has anything to add.
I think the manager has captured it accurately. So first of all, I want to thank you all for authorizing this. This is a huge, huge, it seems simple, like a simple thing, but this is a great development for, for staff, for council, for citizens. What's this going to do is allow us to post the updated code online in a very clear, easy-to-understand, organized way. What happened was, over the years, the code, council had made various amendments, and I have in my office, I don't even bring it anymore, but I have the code book in my office with papers falling out, and, you know, it's, it's, it's all there, but it's jumbled up, and the organization was something I'd never seen before as far as how the, the code sections were, were set out. So all this does is clean all that up. I mean, so thankfully, you know, India was able to, you know, get a good raise from Civics Plus to do that. For the citizens' knowledge, there's nothing substantive here. We're not changing any ordinance or law, simply organizing in a way that you can go online and understand it and find what you're looking for. So this, so, so as a result of that, there's no public hearing, there's no public notice required. So, um, this, so, so as a result of that, there's no, uh, public hearing, there's no, um, public notice required, um, to adopt this ordinance. We're just following state law. So the ordinance simply references the updated renumbered code, which I think India earlier this week or last week, at some point sent a link out, it's a big document, um, I think we were thinking, there it is, so yeah. So we do have a printed copy, but in all likelihood, everyone's just gonna use the online version. Um, so anyway, I'm thankful for this, too, because it makes my job easier when I need to go look up something, that can be much more efficient. So the ordinance before you, I, I just caught, and I apologize, maybe you didn't see this, but I misspelled a couple of names of council members. I apologize, Valerie, Dan, um, and, uh, so we'll fix that, don't worry about that. We will fix that, um, but all it does is, is adopt the updated code, um, and as we've described it, and you can do this tonight. And, and as soon as possible, we will work with Civics Plus to get it posted. I'm sure there will be a link, this is something you can find on Google through their website, but also I'm sure there'll be a link on the town website, so. Big improvement, and I appreciate you all approving this. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Okay, well, at this time, I would like to ask council for a motion, if that's what you choose to do.
I'll make the motion to adopt the reorganization of the code.
I have, um, a motion from Councilman Hagaman, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, second from Councilman Voight, is there any further discussion? All favor, raise your right hand, all motion passes unanimously. There you go, Mr. Gore.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move on to item number eleven, new business, the surplus vehicle approval. And I will turn this over to Ms. India Adams Jacobs, the town manager at this moment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, in closing, your packet is a memo from Mr. Ashcraft and Mr. Fortune related to, um, surplus property. Um, last year, we, we surplus some, um, some property, we sold a couple of vehicles. Um, we've identified, uh, through working with our staff, chief police, uh, this 2014 Dodge Charger, uh, no longer meets operational requirements. Um, maintenance costs exceed the operational benefit, um, for our organization, so we'd like to get town council authority, um, to post this to GovDeals, um, for, uh, surplus and, and disposition. Um, any, uh, proceeds from this would go directly to the general fund budget. Uh, we also have some other items that we will be bringing next month. Um, we've done some significant cleanup, um, of our back town offices through our clean sweep back in May. We've identified some things that we no longer need, so we will bring that, um, as well. Uh, it's a little bit more miscellaneous in nature, um, but as we have vehicles, we obviously pay insurance on them, so we want to be cognizant of that, vehicles that we're no longer using, um, and that don't meet operational requirements, we'd like to dispose of for cost savings.
Are there any questions from council at this time? Would like, if you are willing, um, for council to authorize staff to initiate public bidding procedure and to prepare necessary legal documentation and coordinate disposal in a timeline to ensure compliance with municipal property disposition requirements.
So moved.
That's mouthful. I have a motion from Councilman Voight, is there a second? A second from Mr. Hagaman, is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, um, recommendations for appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I will turn this over to the town manager at this time.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. At our previous, uh, work session, uh, council discussed, um, applicants for both the BZA, um, as well as the EDA, um, as it relates to BZA appointments. Uh, we have, uh, Ms. Taylor Sabakis for a four-year term, Mr. Tyler Gibson for a three-year term for appointment, and then Ms. Jean Young for a five-year appointment for consideration.
Are there any questions from council at this time? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a motion to accept these.
I make a motion to accept those three individuals, uh, Jean Young, Tyler Gibson.
Taylor Sabakis.
Pardon me, Taylor Sebastian for the, uh, BZA.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion from Councilwoman Vice Mayor Coyle, a second from Councilman Hagaman, any further discussion?
I, I believe this needs, that's what you were gonna say, isn't it? Yeah, this needs to be a recommendation to the court.
Clarification, yeah.
Oh, okay, well then, never mind.
Yeah, you're fine, you're good.
So we just need a consensus?
No, no, you need a vote, but the vote is not to appoint them, it's to recommend appointment to.
Draft, draft recommendations.
For a circuit court.
So we need a recommendation to send this to the circuit court?
Correct.
Okay, so, do you need to amend that?
I recommend for appointments to the Bony, Bony Board of Zoning Appeals to the court for the three individuals, Taylor Sebastian, Tyler Gibson, and Jean Young.
Okay, we now.
And I'll still second that.
And we have a second by Mr. Hagaman, any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Voight, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries unanimously. The next item, number twelve, recommendations for appointment to, uh, the EDA, the Economic Development Authority. And I will, at this time, also turn this over to the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just like the last item, town council, uh, considered, um, applicants, and so based on that consideration, we have, uh, Mr. Dirk Farmer for a term of three years, Ms. Jessica Beal for a term of three years, Mr. Kyer Lee for a term of two years, Ms. Catrice Howard for a term of two years, Mr. Jason Mans for a term of four years, and Councilmember Randy Hagman for a term of one year, and Councilmember David Stork for a term of one year.
So we have these recommendations, is there any further discussion about this? Are you backing out, Mr. Stork? Oh, oh, that, yes, are they allowed to vote for themselves?
Madam Mayor, he can, but I think if he wants to abstain with regard to his appointment, he's free to do that.
And Mr. Hagaman also.
Likewise.
Okay, so I would like a recommendation, uh, from the, one of the five of you.
All right, so I will recommend for appointments to the Economic Development Authority. Do I need to read each name? All right, so let's see how my brain, Dirk Farmer, Jessica Beal, Jason Mans, Randy Hagman, David Stork, Chris, Kyer. Steve Howard, and I think that, and Kylie.
For the terms as stated by the.
For the terms as stated by the town manager, sorry.
No, that's fine. So I have a motion for Vice Mayor Coyle, is there a second? I have a second from Dr. Chenault, is there any further discussion? I will take a vote from the five of you. Um, all in favor, raise your right hands, motion carries, five, and two abstaining. Next item is the, um, MOU for GIS services for SER, Circap. It's an acronym Fiesta. Number fourteen, I guess, I'll turn that over to the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just an update, um, the town and working through, um, some of our efforts with the state, uh, moonshot missions, as well as, um, some of our other prof, uh, partners, um, have worked with, uh, a company called Circap, who has once again provided us free services to the town, um, for, uh, GIS mapping, which has been a, a long time wish, I think, of both council and the planning commission. Um, and we have worked with them over the last several weeks, uh, they came two weeks ago, um, to start that work. Um, worked, um, with Mr. Fortune, our Public Works Department, um, have gone out and looked at all of our, most of all of our assets, uh, from our pump stations to our lines, hydrants, things of that nature, um, so that we can have a GIS system, um, to better maintain and know where our infrastructure is in town. So this is a, a, a big, big project and a long time coming. Um, just wanted to thank Mr. Fortune for his work, um, and to notify you all that that will be coming, um, so that we have that internally moving forward.
Ms. Adams Jacobs, you mentioned the fire hydrants, are they being replaced at this time, or are we still?
We are still awaiting some, um, some quotes on that. There's some, um, potential alignment that we want to make sure we have with the water line project, um, but we are looking into that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council at this time? All right, hearing none, let's move on to item fifteen, which is the SEID grant application, Ms. Jacobs?
Yeah, I mentioned that in my monthly report, um, that we worked with, um, Web and Associates to assist us with that PR. Um, there was a short turnaround, um, both myself and Mr. Smith, um, worked on a grant, uh, to get pre-approval. Um, there was a very, very, like I mentioned, short turnaround, we found out in May, uh, we met with the George Washington Regional Commission. Um, I think we were one of the only localities in our regional commission that were able to get an application together in time. Luckily, we, we know some of our needs in town, um, and were able to identify the rest of Main Street so that we can get the CCTV work as well as the, uh, cure-in-place, uh, to hopefully avoid, uh, what we had happen, um, in the downtown core and Main Street, um, in the future. So, uh, we will know in several months, uh, the status of that grant as well. Um, that is a fifty-fifty, that's a one-to-one, um, the total grant, um, request was for three hundred thousand, so, uh, we would be on hook for half of that.
Thank you, any questions for the town manager? Um, at this time, I did not see anyone new come in, but we will open this up for public comment. If there's anyone that wants to speak, and I'm not gonna repeat the rules. Anyone out there? Okay, at this time, I'll close public comment, oh.
Some question regarding something y'all talked about minutes ago.
Um, I will allow that at this time, go ahead.
Those two recommendations ago, the woman y'all made, who else? I don't know if I remember some of them, but I asked that question. I don't know two or three on the.
It's the process, we put this out publicly and ask, um, for people to apply. Not all the positions have to be people that live in town, there are rules and regulations from which we have to use. BZA, they have to live in town, EDA, they do not. Um, many of these people live in town, or they have businesses here, and, or they work at some of the businesses here. So, um, we can give you a list.
There's lists of them, I never heard of them, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Not each of them, I never heard of them.
Well, they are all, um, citizens here in the county of Caroline. Not all of them, and I don't know which two you're referring to, so I'm not sure. Yes, please.
The one that, for the three, I can't pronounce the name, whatever it was, Jean Young.
Tyler Gibson, uh, ice cream place. Taylor Sebastian is a, uh, resident here in town who applied for it. She is actually a new resident, she just moved in in two thousand twenty-four.
I agree.
And one on the other one, I know the story, I know the name, I know some of them, talk about that, I didn't know two.
You know, can we, I'll tell you, can you ask the town manager after the meeting? Yes, ma'am, we will, we will get the answer to you, I promise. Yes, ma'am. Okay, well, at this time, um, we will move on to member comments. Ms. Davis, do you have any?
I have none.
Mr. Voight? Mr. Webb? Dr. Chenault? Vice Mayor Coyle?
Yep.
Mr. Stork?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Hagaman?
No.
I have none, that's unusual. Um, well, I actually do, thank you all for coming, it's so nice to see all of you sitting out there. At this time, I would like, uh, a motion to go to closed session from this council. At, at the session, at, at the closed session? Yeah, yeah, because we haven't made a decision.
Madam Mayor, I can state the motion, um, and will include, um, three state code sections, uh, for the, uh, closed, closed meeting discussions. So we need a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to MuniCode Section two point two thirty-seven eleven eight three for the discussion of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where a discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position of council pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eleven eight eight for consultation with legal counsel and pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eleven A one for, uh, in consideration and discussion of candidates for, uh, the position of Planning and Community Development Director and for discussion of performance and compensation of specific town employees.
So you have heard it, ma'am, a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilman Stork, a second from Councilman Hagaman, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. We will move to closed session, and we will take a ten-minute recess while people leave and we get our texts together. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we're back in open session. We need a motion and a roll call vote to certify that we only council only discuss the items identified in the closed session motion as permitted under Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
So moved.
A motion from Councilman Stork, a second from Councilman Hagaman. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your... Oh, I'm sorry. It's a certification. Ms. Davis.
I certify.
Mr. Voight.
I certify.
Mr. Webb.
I certify.
Dr. Chanel.
I certify.
Vice Mayor Coyle.
Certify.
Mr. Stork.
I certify.
Mr. Hagaman.
I certify.
We are back into open session. If we have no more business before this council at this time, I would respect this. Oh, okay. Well, then, we do have more business. It's just not on my agenda. So you want guidance on the project scope?
Need some kind of clarity.
Yeah. We...
And I think what India wanted was she wanted clarity on whether she is going forward with additional services, but I feel like I can't be a part of it.
You know, because now you shouldn't. Um... You are excused, Mr. Webb. So at this time, what would this council like to ask of the town manager? Mr. Stork, he was like, ready to talk.
So India and Percy, so for clarification purposes, what do we need to address so that you all know how to move forward, given the fact that we've addressed the question about whether we're going to get easements or not, which we've decided not to? But the scope of this work, what exactly do you need from us, India?
Let's start with the fact that 5.2 million dollars, that's all we've been working with.
Since the discussions came about, the options that were given, one and twos, we've now, since the easements have been set to the side, we know that we're going to face some additional costs. The estimate is around $114,000, give or take. First of all, I think the manager needs direction as to where do you want that portion of the money to come from? Do you want it to come from the 5.5 million, which would reduce the scope and stay within that 5.5 million? That would be staff's recommendation, not to exceed that.
Absolutely. I think we've still got the same pot of poker chips. And I say we need to get as much done as we can with that original amount and keep the core stuff, like she mentioned, downtown, our governmental things and our money makers, and back into that number.
And if your emphasis is downtown, which it may not have really been to this point, then that might cause a little bit of a change. You could still stay in budget, but it just reduces the project somewhere else, I guess, on the outskirts.
I don't see why we have any other choice. I mean, I'd just say we back into that original amount.
Okay, okay.
With the tax increases that we just put in, that should help further down the line with some additional funds. And as we get caught up by the end of next year into 2027, and we don't have these audit fees that we're paying, we'll also have some more funds that we can convert from one area back to these projects.
And I mean, I think for our foreseeable future, any big infrastructure projects we do, there's going to have to be some grants and some... I mean, we're just not going to be able to pay you right check and stuff, but...
And just so I'm clear, for the record, you all are authorizing me to... For this additional proposal for engineering services with Web and Associates and the amount of the estimate of $114,000 to execute that proposal.
Is that the recommendation from this council?
So the $114,000 is for engineering studies, or that's the cost of the boring?
That was the differential in the price.
So it would be both the additional work, that's the cost associated with the engineering work, and the additional for the boring.
And can that come out of the 5.2 million?
I believe so, but that's assuming and making the assumption that we do receive that funding at some point. If we do not, that will be something that will have to be paid from the town's fund balance.
We're already on the hook of 1.5 because we've done that work.
Correct.
I feel like the exact second that this thing falls apart on the USDA side, we need to bail and pay off the 1.5. But if... And I just, I'm hopeful that we can still get this 5.2. I mean, if they're not talking and we're behind on audits and they're not happy with us, I mean, we're moving ahead like we've got that money in the bank, but we don't really have that money in the bank, right?
The money has been allocated to us, but based on the five-year period that this has taken, they have obviously indicated that that funding is at risk and has been at risk since the town has been noncompliant with the audit requirements back to '21 or '22. Calendar year, not fiscal year.
That's just my opinion, but I mean...
Ms. Davis, do you have anything to add? Mr. Voight, your opinion, recommendation?
We've all talked. I mean, you know, getting everything fixed is the right thing to do because it's going to crumble underneath us if we don't. You know, as we continue with getting a little bit closer, I think maybe to David's point is like, at some point, I guess there is a point in overturn if things get funded. But, you know, with how we're moving now, like, you know, we move forward with this, and if we find out next week to pull the funding, I feel like you could still pull the plug if you have advance notice enough. But, you know, when are we talking that, you know, shovels would hit the dirt? I don't really know the timing.
Based on the most recent update, based on the proposal, the bid would go out in December. I don't have that specific number as it relates to construction, but potentially spring.
It's not out of the question to have the spring of '26 to where you really have some activity going.
All right. So March, possibly.
I don't know how long it takes you to... You've got your advertising period through contracts, you have your negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dr. Chanel.
Yeah, I agree with this.
Vice Mayor Coyle.
I feel the same way. I think we should try to move forward. Mr. Stork. Okay, and Councilman Hagaman?
Yes.
Do you have your answer?
I think we need a roll call vote.
Yeah. Yeah, I will.
We do want to indicate that Dan left.
Recommendation, or if this was, or if we have to take a vote.
I think since it's a change in project previously project scope that has a cost associated with it, I think it's in order to have a motion to approve the change in USDA project scope and associated costs as presented by staff.
Okay, so I will need a motion from someone on this council.
Okay, so I make a motion that, given the fact that we're not going to pursue because of the time constraints, the easements, that we shift to the Plan B or two, whatever it was, that we move forward with the project, keeping in mind that we were going to scale it back to stay within the original USDA grant amount or loan amount. Does that cover enough?
And I would say that approve the revised project scope with associated costs identified by staff.
Exactly.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a second. A motion from Councilman Stork, a second from Vice Mayor Coyle. Um, any further discussion? I will take a roll call. Councilman Hagaman.
Yes.
Councilman Stork, Vice Mayor Coyle, Councilman Chanel.
Yes.
Councilman Webb is... He is... It's not gone. It's what you say when you...
I'd mark him down as abstained.
Thank you. That's the word I was looking. He is abstained, conflict of interest. Thank you. And Councilman Voight?
Me, yes.
And Councilwoman, well...
One modest addendum, that is to authorize the manager to proceed with procurement and execution of the contract.
So is that...
Well, not procurement, just execution of the contract.
Is that part of the motion?
Yeah, I would just...
Part of that separate.
You can do it separate.
Let's do it separate.
Okay.
Let's do this. We got the roll call. It passes six to one, and the one is the abstain. Okay, now go on and make the other.
Just... Just a motion to authorize manager to execute the associated contract.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm going to take a roll call. Ms. Davis? Mr. Voight?
Yes.
Dr. Chanel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coyle? Mr. Stork?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hagaman?
Yes.
Vote is six to one. Mr. Webb has abstained due to conflict of interest. Is there any other business before this council?
Move the adjournment.
Move, we go home.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Stork, a second for Ms. Davis. All in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting adjourned.
Spend the night. I need eggs. He's going to the grocery store.
These citizens that think we don't do anything, you know, they need to come and walk in our shoes, don't they?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.